All right, we'll go ahead and call the school committee business meeting for October 20th, 2025 to order at 6:30 PM. Ms. Yell, would you please call the roll?
Julia Walker.
Present.
Sarah Hall.
Yes.
Kathy Shaw.
Here.
Amy Boger.
Here.
And Brianna Higgins, Mary Rhian, and Brian Callahan, and NOK here tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Yell. Can we all stand for the point of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for public comment? Okay, I don't see anyone in the room, and there's no one on the Zoom call. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the warrant. Mr. Boger?
Yes, I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $502,616.74 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? You all received a copy of the warrant via email?
Yes.
All right. Seeing no discussion, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the vice chair votes aye. All right. Next item is the approval of the meeting minutes for October 6th, 2025. I would note that Ms. Yell has indicated there were a few minor corrections to some errors in spelling and so forth that we've already viewed. Any other items that anyone wants to bring up before we vote? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Great.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The vice chair votes aye. Obviously, nobody opposed. Okay. So the minutes are approved. And the next item is the school committee student representative report.
Okay, so in Breznerham news, we are getting ready for our annual costume parade on Halloween. All parents and guardians are invited to attend along the sidewalk between doors 1 and 4. We're also hosting our second caregiver conversations coffee hour next Wednesday, 10:29 at 8:45 in the Breznerham cafeteria. This conversation will be centered around our standards-based report card. We will be discussing how to interpret the standards based on scoring, and parents will have the opportunity to connect with our instructional coaching team. All caregivers are invited to join. In Mullen news, Mullen parent conferences are Wednesday, November 12th, and Tuesday, November 18th. Please contact your child's teachers to schedule one. Mullen's 5th grade and 8th grade, and the NOK 8th grades are Mullen buddies again this year. They will meet monthly to build connections, share experiences, and learn from one another. And Mullen 4th graders have had a successful trip to Spencer Pierce Little Farm, participating in their educational program about archaeology that ties into their social studies curriculum. In NOK middle school news, October's sock drive is at the NOK. Our student leaders are excited to kick off this year's October drive, and we need your help to reach our goal of collecting over 2,000 pairs of socks. In partnership with Pango, we've learned that socks are the most urgently needed item for those in need. In fact, 2,000 pairs typically last less than 72 hours once distributed. That's how great the need is. All donations are welcome. Please drop off new socks at the main office anytime during the drive. Your generosity is greatly appreciated. Lately, students have been leaving school on early release days happier than ever, and it's not just because we're heading out at 11:00 AM. The real reason is that an awesome community time we shared during the last 30 minutes of the day. Everyone, students, teachers, and staffs come together for town hall-style meetings where we share updates and celebrate good news, go over expectations of recognizing and celebrating classmates who show the NOK values of kindness, responsibility, awareness, and respect. These moments have brought the NOK community ever closer together, and it's something we all look forward to on every release day. In high school news, on Saturday, October 18th, the NHS band traveled to Amherst to perform on the field with the UMass band and 2,000 other high school band members during halftime of a football game. They rose early for the long drive, rehearsed all morning with a giant band, performed with wild enthusiasm and applause from the football audience, and stayed for the performance by the amazing UMass band. It was a long but very successful and educational day. The Global Scholars Club and members of the Global Citizens Program volunteered at the Indigenous Peoples' Day Festival on October 11th. This was a great way to connect their hands on work, helping with the misoon, or dugout canoe, as they got to participate in its launch into the Merritt-McRiver. Students are also assisted in indigenous performers, storytellers, and craft people, and worked with the organizers of the event. And last week during Omicron Block, the entire school participated in an activity fair to practice networking, as well as encouraging more students to get involved in school activity. And that is all I have tonight.
Thank you, and I want to just mention thanks to Maddie Jackman, who's one of our student representatives this year. The second year in a row, right, that you've been our student rep? Thank you so much. All right. Next item on the agenda is MCIEA presentation.
All right. This time we'll call Dr. Abrams and Assistant Superintendent Lisa Furlong. And this is the group that we've been working with part of the Education Commonwealth Project. Just kind of give us an update of where we're at and some of the data that our faculty and support staff have been utilizing.
Is this just a single sheet? All the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need me to?
No, just.
You sure?
Excellent.
I'll just, I'll stop Mary.
I'll have to share the adjustments between me and Dr. Abrams. So thank you for having us. We are here to just give some background information around a partnership that we started last year with what at the time was called Education Commonwealth Project, or ECP, which is now called Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Education Assessment.
Got it. Thanks for that clarification.
C-I before E-A, even though it's after a C. And that's really just, they have kind of gone with both names. They've been doing work in Massachusetts for quite a number of years. They're coming under one umbrella of the MCIEA name, doing the work of really helping schools dig into how do we measure school quality? How do we use data to do that, to inform the community, and to sort of measure, give ourselves feedback in terms of how the schools are doing in a variety of different ways beyond just a once-a-year MCAS score, although that's kind of a piece of our measurement. So we did present last year, but just to backtrack a little bit, the School Quality Measure Framework is built on, if you look at the graphic, there's really a core. The core are two big areas, academic learning and the community and wellbeing of our schools. And then feeding into that are three big areas, teachers in leadership, school culture, and school resources. And so the School Quality Measure Framework tries to look at all five of those areas across 34 unique measures. With each one of those areas, there's different measures. And they collect data through student and teacher surveys, and also pull data from the Department of Ed, public profile data. So we began this work last spring with a questionnaire that went out to all of the educators, teachers, and instructional assistants, as well as students in grades 6 through 12, to begin our baseline collection. So just a little bit more on the framework. I passed around a paper, and if you're following along at home in a packet posted online, there is on that second bullet a detailed overview of the framework. And so you can see within those five big areas, there are a lot of subareas that the questionnaire and the data collection is helping us to build a sense of, like, how are we doing in school culture? Under that, Dr. Abrams will talk to you a little bit about, we might be measuring student and teacher sense of belonging, or student sense of belonging from the perspective of the teacher. And so that one-page handout that you have in front of you gives you the five big areas with all the subareas underneath that eventually builds our big dashboard, if that makes sense. Everything that they're doing is publicly available. So although I just passed out the framework overview, you can also see the survey questions that are asked of students and of teachers, following the links or going to the MCIEA website. And you can also see the dashboards that are public for some of the schools that are ready. So typically, it takes a three-year process to get to the point where a school district will allow their data dashboard to be public. That's for a number of different reasons. Number one is that we are learning how to use the data and analyze the data. Number two is that you are building a couple of years of student data in particular that allows you to see trending information. And number three is just feeling like you have had time amongst the stakeholders within the district, the teachers, the principals, the people who are, you know, affected by the data, to have a chance to analyze it, to understand it, and to make action plans. So our expectation is by 2027 is when our dashboard will be public. So yeah, this is slides, just really a recap of that. Right now, what we're in the process of doing is our principals worked with the MCIEA staff really in late, at the end of the year, I think June, May-June, when our data first got put together. Then we did a longer workshop over the summer with our whole extended leadership team. And this early in the fall, principals worked directly with the MCIEA consultants to look into their school-based data, and are now in the process of training a team of teachers who will be kind of the train-the-trainer approach, where they're going to be ruling out to the entire staff in smaller groups, how do you look at the data? What do we see from the data? How do we dig deeper in terms of using some data protocols and understanding what do we want to take action with the data? So the training process right now, it's a four-part webinar that teachers are going through. We'll finish that in December. In January and February, the teachers will roll out some data workshops with their colleagues. In March, we'll do a second round of the survey. We hope this time to include 4th and 5th grade students and possibly parents. MCIEA is working on a parent survey that it's possible that will be ready for us to begin to implement as well. And then from there, we'll just kind of continue that same cycle of data with a goal of by the March 2027 survey date, we'll be able to make the dashboard public for people to explore the data more directly themselves. You can see the public dashboards of other schools on the MCIEA dashboard, if you're curious about, like, what does it look like and how does it work? But just as a little more background, what informs the framework in front of you? You have those five big areas and all 34 subareas. What's feeding our measurement upon each one of those are administrative data that's taken from our DESI profile, Department of Ed profile, student surveys. There are 44 items on the student 6-12 survey. Next year, we will add a survey for grades 4 and 5. There are slightly fewer items on that survey. And there are 70 items on the all teachers, and although it says all teachers, we did include our instructional assistants or our paraprofessionals in the surveys as well. And you can see to the right, just kind of an example of how that might get put together. If the overall big idea or subtopic is a student sense of belonging, the type of questions in a teacher survey might be something like, at this school, how respectful are students to each other? How much do students at this school care about each other? The student survey questions might ask, how much respect do students in your school show you? Overall, how much do you feel like you belong at your school? And we can disaggregate the data. We'll be able to look at it, how do the teachers answer? How do the students answer? And then also have an aggregate score for, did we meet? What is the expected benchmark for that one particular area? And Tom will show you a little bit more on the dashboard what that looks like. And yeah, and that's you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So as Lisa mentioned, this year, we're in the process of integrating the school quality measure data into our already established protocol of gathering, analyzing, and utilizing data. One of my responsibilities as the district literacy coordinator is to help facilitate some of those meetings. Now, those meetings might happen at a grade-level team during common planning time. It might happen during a faculty meeting time with a building, or it might happen at a professional development day with a more vertical team. So with those teams, this is kind of the first layer of the data that they would have access to. This is a 30,000-foot view of the data. This is our dashboard. You'll see it has the five indicators that Lisa mentioned, teachers in leadership, school culture, resources, academic learning, community, and wellbeing. At the bottom, you'll see the measurements, and besides those measurements, you'll see a circle that's either, it looks kind of blue and purple on the screen up there. It might look a little different. The ones with the check marks in it, those are the ones that we're doing pretty well on, or ideal, and might have one or three check marks. If it's that yellowish-orange color with a little piece of pie missing, those are areas that we can grow a little bit. And then that one category on this one where you see it's just a shade of gray, that means we just don't have any data available to inform that category. So that's our 30,000-foot view that teachers will have access to. And then at that point, they can click on any of those subcategories and get to the next level. So let's imagine they clicked on relationships, and they would be able to browse the dashboard, and this is what they would see. On the left-hand side, you have some of the aggregate data for subcategory 2B relationships that has students and teacher survey information in it. And then if you look at the right-hand side, that has some slightly disaggregated data with the two measurements, 2B1 and 2B2. 2B1 is student sense of belonging, and 2B2 is student-teacher relationships. You'll see in 2B1 that we have student and teacher survey data for that, and then for the student-teacher relationship, only student survey data. Teachers can, they can recall from their memory that they took the survey, and they might remember some of the questions that they were asked. If they kind of forget or want to refresh, or they can click on the teacher survey button and see some of the questions, like, how much do students at this school care about each other? They won't be as familiar with the student survey questions, but they can click on that, and then they could see some of the questions that the student answers, like, overall, how much do you feel like you belong at your school? Do you remember taking the survey? Yeah, she remembers taking the survey. So once this, this is kind of our second layer. We have the dashboard, we have the browse button. And then the third layer is where they can actually start to analyze some of this, and it's much more disaggregated. You'll see that this was our 2B1 measurement, student sense of belonging. All students, it's slightly above for approval. All teachers are a little bit above that. We have no school data for this measurement. And then on the right side, we would have those two pieces of data aggregated where it's kind of in the middle of the teachers and the students. So those are the three layers that teachers would have access to. There are so many categories, subcategories, and measurements. It's a lot of data. What we're really trying to establish is integrating this into the protocols that we've already begun, whether it's with literacy data or on the pieces of data. So this year, we will ask ourselves these questions in those small groups, whether it's a grade-level team, a building-based team, or a district vertical team. Question one, which measures have the highest average across all schools in the district? That stuff we're probably doing a pretty good job with. Which measures are closest to the approval zone? And then the final question, which I think is a very important one, is which measures reflect a difference among teachers and students, where our perceptions as teachers might be different than students' perceptions who are living their experience day-to-day. Once we ask those questions, we'll run a very deliberate protocol so that we do something with the data. It might be a five why protocol, why, 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 why. It might be a what, so what, now what protocol, in which we try to understand the data. And then most importantly, I think, is developing some action steps to have an improved school culture. And that's when we get to this final piece, you know, after teachers have looked at the data, administrators, after we've had some of these vertical discussions, it will really allow us to help improve culture in the Newburyport schools. For example, let's say Newburyport High School sees that students don't feel as engaged as we want them to feel. We want our kids to feel engaged every day in school. Then we can put in action steps that will hopefully have a student's experience shift where they feel more engaged in school. Maybe at an elementary school, kids don't feel like they have a sense of feeling like a scholar or an academic. We can put in action steps to hopefully change that mindset where students will feel like they are scholars and young academics. So again, it's a lot of data. It's really putting those processes in place so that we actually do something with it, and it doesn't just sit on a shelf somewhere.
You can see in front of you that with our first iteration through our leadership team and through our principals, there are some areas that we think we may target. In each school, it looks a little bit different, but you can kind of look towards teachers in leadership at the Breznerham, school culture at the Mullen, teachers in leadership and culture at the NOK, and school culture also at the high school. But the subcategories where they're maybe seeing either an area that's below that four-point cutoff that would make us kind of meet our mark, or also an area where maybe we've met our mark, but there's a discrepancy between how the students respond and the teachers respond. And so those will be areas that we'll be looking at. Really, when we went down this road under the guidance of the superintendent, what we were looking for is a broad-based way to say, how are we doing as a school? How are we measuring our school quality? And how can we make that public to anybody here in Newburyport, whether they're attending schools or not attending schools? And so you can see that it's one piece of data that we use in collaboration with lots of other data sources that we've also been building our capacity to collect and analyze. MCAS has been with us for a very, very long time. iReady is a tool that we've been using for a couple of years at the beginning, middle, and end of year. It's another data point. And across the entire district, but especially at the high school where they don't have some of these outside, like an iReady tool, there are common assessment tools that they're looking at to measure progress. So when we look at that top part of the circle, that academic learning part of our core there, we're looking not just at the school quality measure data, but we're looking at for patterns of how all this data fits together to help us tell a story. And I think what we found last year was some important places that we could make some strategic investments from an academic perspective. We made strategic investments in shared leadership. It is critical for us as a district, as a part of our vision, to ensure that our educators and our students have a voice in the decision-making that we are doing around curriculum, instruction, and assessment. So to get to that, you have to have time for those teachers and students to have a voice. You need to have some training to make sure that we're kind of like on that same page together, which is what Tom's talking about with protocols. There are specific ways that we address the data, and then we have to do it in a, that's the third bullet there, in iterative fashion. We have to be able to do it not just once a year, but throughout the course of the year. And so that's where that middle bullet comes up, is that our principals really worked quite heavily on their schedules in the spring and into the fall to ensure that our instructional coaches and our teacher leaders would have time to have those iterative conversations built into the schedule, whether that's common planning time, faculty meetings, or the early release days, helping us to really get at that. And I think on the bottom part of the circle, the community and wellbeing, and I like the way on this graphic, they're kind of equal. Both of those are important to us, because a student who doesn't feel like they belong or who doesn't feel healthy at school is going to have a difficult time accessing the curriculum. So under that piece, other strategic areas that you can see in our budget and in the structure is, again, investing in shared leadership. Who's at the table making the important decisions about programs and supports that students might need? And one of the ways we do that is by providing stipends as a part of our budget to ensure that teacher leaders can come outside of their contractual time and work with us to understand the data and help us to build programs. And also, over the course of the past five years, through the superintendent, we've really been investing in robust counseling programs, all to meet those community and wellbeing pieces, looking at data around attendance, extracurricular participation, discipline, the health data, whether that comes from the nurse, or it comes from our signs of suicide, or it comes from some of the data that we do in collaboration with youth services about student use of drugs, or alcohol, or healthy habits and assets. And again, you can see kind of the repetition. I think the strategic use of scheduling is also important in this area, because what every school has done is built in a time where we can strengthen the connection with every child to school and to at least one adult in school, whether that's through morning meeting at the elementary level, advisory at the middle and high school level. And then in addition, something we spent a lot of time on last year, especially in our conversations around math, was how are we doing intervention and investing in that intervention time, finding time in the schedule to be able to provide an effective intervention? All of that is, you know, principals having to create a schedule, having to have the resources to staff that schedule, and then allowing us the time to be able to, again, on that last bullet, have iterative, protocol-based conversations to move some of these areas forward that we're identifying as areas of growth. The attendance is a nice example of a place where, through a $10,000 grant from the Department of Education, we were able to create an attendance team. They made some good progress in the first year. We've seen good progress again with our accountability data from last year, and then an investment on the part of the school committee in the budget to allow for the sustaining of that attendance team for this year and hopefully years going forward. So that's kind of a lot of our talking. I don't know if you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you. I think that last piece is helpful. I think was not in our packet, so if you don't mind.
No, we have that today.
I know, that's great. It ties it all together, so I appreciate that. If you could share that, that'd be great. Any questions for our presenters? Yeah, Mr. Boger?
Sure. I was just curious. It seems like a very thorough and holistic tool, and I was kind of just interested, given the level of expertise and experience the two of you have, if there was anything that you thought was missing, or that you would have done differently if you had built this from scratch? Or, I mean, is this meeting your expectations and are excited about what it's going to reveal going forward, that kind of thing?
Yeah. I think our experience in working with the organization has been excellent. They're funded by the Massachusetts State Legislature. It does not cost the district any money, which is quite unusual. And the level of expertise that we have from our consultant around not just how did he build the data, how the research informs the questions that they used in the questionnaire, what other schools have done, so Sean and a few other people are a member of collaboration of all the schools who are using this. And they're quite responsive to if we do feel like something is missing. We've all been thinking a lot about is, it would be so wonderful if like the actual data could exist in the same template as this data. Like, we're kind of balancing our MCAS data with this data. It's not all in one place at this point. So it's like a big underlying database issue that I don't think that they're necessarily going to be able to answer, but they're quite responsive. And I don't know if Sean wants to speak to it. There's a big partnership of all the districts who are using this, collaborating to continue to build it and make it better. So I feel like our experience with them has really been quite excellent.
That's great to hear. The question, when you mentioned that you could look up other districts, what's the scale of that? How many districts have done this?
I want to say there's, well, do you?
I don't remember off the top of my head the number. There are a lot of local districts, Masco, Rivehead Public Schools, et cetera.
My recollection is there's around 12 of the original districts who started it. China and Sean, if you want to change that number. And now there are up to about 30 districts who are expanding and helping them move beyond just the original. And it's that original group who, part of their work with MCIEA was to say, we commit to working with you, and we commit to making our data public after a three-year period with you, and that's why those dashboards are public.
Yeah, just a follow-up. So, yeah, a couple pieces. So as we go through our own data, that's why I think it's really important to slow rollout in the sense of having our administrators and our teachers working with the data. The feedback we receive from them, if, you know, as the administrators, if we don't see something that was asked, we can get teacher input, and then we can work with the group, and they can modify the surveys as, you know, as we move forward. So that's a really important piece. The other piece too, and I'm on the board with this group, is this was a thought, I would say, three years ago or four years ago, understanding that many schools have a lot of initiatives, that, you know, a lot of data points, and really the idea of that one MCAS test is really isn't showing what a lot of the districts are doing. So those original So those original 12 districts that went into this program was kind of like the pilot. But as the governor and people are discussing, you know, what's next for MCAS, they're definitely looking at this type of a program to do school quality measures for all districts. And so Newburyport, we're full in on this. Like, some districts can pick and choose in the sense of just use the survey questions, but I really feel like this organization is going to have a big impact, I think, down the road on how our state assessment is going to look like. And I really believe we're going to see more of this type of assessment of a district and taking that whole school or whole child approach, which is really important because we are, you know, we're doing a lot of great things along with other districts and really emphasizing and addressing the mental health needs of our students. And so as you're investing, you know, in your counseling programs, you're investing in your, you know, advocacy programs, your advisory, morning meetings, how do you show, right, that that's actually working? So part of this effort is really that social-emotional learning piece, is you're going to have some data that's showing how this is impacting, you know, students and teachers on a daily basis. So I'm really excited, you know, about this. And part of being on the governing board is the other districts. Right now, there's probably about 16 districts that are with us. RIVIER is definitely one of them. And just kind of working through, you know, what the next steps are going to be, you know, for this data as they're looking for an alternative type of an assessment. So I think we're in a good place. And what I really love about this and our approach is really working with our teachers, our teacher leaders, and having them fully understand the questions that are being asked, digging deep. And then we can receive feedback as we go along with this and then work with the people from UMass. If there is, like you said, Mr. Boger, if there's something that's missing or something that Newburyport wants to look at that, you know, so it's not just, you know, one survey for everybody. So we do have that flexibility to model this after the needs of Newburyport Public Schools.
Okay.
That's great to hear that it's sort of customizable. Just on the surveys themselves, I was just curious, it was like 81% or 53 or 56 on the student surveys is?
Do you want to take that?
I would love to.
And then I remember being back in the classroom, just getting to fill out surveys.
As Sean was saying, you know, I'm privy to this information because I'm on a committee with other districts, and that's one of the questions that consistently comes up. So, you know, Lisa mentioned there are 44 questions. Well, technically, there are 66 student questions. Students are only given 44 of those. So because they don't, if they took all 66 questions, our number would be closer to 100%. But because they've only given 44 of the 66, depending on what question it is, then the percentage could go lower, if that makes sense. So even though it looks like 44, 55% of students, you know, that number's a little bit lower because those were the percentages who got that specific question. Now, we do have the option, as Sean was saying, to adjust. We can ask students all 66 questions. RIVIER does that, so their number is actually closer to 100%. The worry from the organization is that students have survey fatigue, where they have to do it not only, you know, maybe multiple times, but then they do the vocal survey and then this survey. And so they want to eliminate survey fatigue, so that's why it's the 44 questions.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I think moving forward and talking to the team and with the teachers as we do the survey into the spring, that's, we might just do the full 66 questions, but that's obviously getting input from our team. But that was the idea of, you know, is that survey fatigue, you're making sure the students are really concentrating on their answers and not just breezing through it.
Right.
Mr. Boger, do you have any follow-up?
Okay.
Okay. And I just, I don't want to put you on the spot, Maddie, but if you do have any follow-up questions, feel free to chime in. Any other questions for, yeah, Member Hall?
What do we need improvement on, you know, that kind of stuff? So I just thought it would be good as a group to just talk a little bit about that. Is there anything that any members who participated last year would want to make sure we did or in the communications subcommittee whether you guys have talked about?
I know one thing we discussed, we want to make sure that this is a good idea. And I think having those kind of personalized invitations to the school councils, to the superintendent's council, I don't know if we can think of any other particular groups. Yeah, PTO. I think people appreciate that versus just the, you know, the parent email blasts.
Yes.
And it really doesn't hurt to hear about something more than once.
Yeah, exactly.
You know? So I think that's important. And then just really having enough time for people to share and reflect on. I remember last time it was a little slow, but then once people warmed up, right? We just, we got a lot of hands and a lot of input, which is great.
And I know, one of my personal preferences is that we all sit up as a group to sort of be the receivers of the information. I know I just fired some people last time to sit up front.
Let's just plan, let's just state that is our intention. Because you're right, we didn't really talk about it. And some members were, school committee members were more participants.
Yeah.
Not going to put anyone on the spot. But yes, I think it was just the two of us.
We ought to be amongst the people.
But it's, we're supposed to be like receivers.
Well, it's more reflected, or like, because we're calling it a listen session, listening session. So we are listening.
Right.
Right, to the input. I just, I like the optics of that. I think we can just set it up that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it'd be great to also have city council invited. I know it's a bad week for a lot of people who are running, so appreciate those who are going to be there that, you know, it is, it is the night before the election, but okay.
Well, I was encouraging the mayor to try to integrate that into some of the communications because a lot of people see his outreach. And if he could mention that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because it's coming up in the, in the, in the election.
Yeah.
You know, schools.
Of course.
So it would be great to have that encouragement, to have your voice heard. Come, come speak to us and with us.
Yeah. And the students, maybe at the student councils, we could just make sure that the student councils are also invited. And I can work with the, I can follow up with you, superintendent. Anything from a staff perspective? I know it's primarily about the school committee hearing, but was there anything you guys? I know we were going to do sort of that overview, that kind of overview presentation that we did last time. I think it's being updated.
I guess the video, the video? Yes.
It's working on.
They're working on updating it.
Love that video.
All right. Ms. Shaw, anything you can think of based on your, I think that, you were pretty new when we did it last year, but.
Yeah.
Any insight?
Okay. It was definitely an improvement over the model the year before with the workshops, the school-specific workshops. I mean, they were great workshops, but they were very poorly attended.
They were, they were awesome workshops. Yeah. I think Mr. Berger participated in multiple ones, but not as candidates. All right. And we also welcome next year, members.
Oh, absolutely.
All right. Well, great. Well, thanks for that input. And I think we can move on. We were, last time we mentioned that the November 17th school committee meeting was going to be, now because we have the joint committee with council, the joint meeting with council scheduled for the 18th, we're going to have two back-to-back. And we're thinking that maybe we could cancel the November 17th school committee meeting, which is currently on our meetings calendar and also conflicted with the city council meeting. It was one of those meetings that we were going to potentially move. So we talked, maybe that would be good to actually take an official vote on that. And I know, I thought we could move to make that motion. Somebody could move that, make that motion, and we can have some discussion because I know there's some concerns about scheduling and so forth. So somebody is willing to make that motion.
But moving to moving?
Moving to cancel this.
To cancel, to not have it?
Yes.
What's the date?
The November 17th meeting.
I moved to not have the November 17th school committee meeting.
Second. Okay. So for discussion, I can start. So I think in terms of the business items, we do, it does leave one less meeting for us to cover business items. However, we do have the option to either have a business meeting before or after the 18th meeting, which is a joint meeting. I think the joint meeting is scheduled for six.
Six.
Yeah. So we could potentially, if we need to, have a, have a business meeting after that meeting, if we needed to. But we've got, we are sort of, we have sort of forecasted, mapped out the schedule for the next few meetings. And we feel like we're in a good spot now. There could always, something can always come up.
Right.
But right now, we feel like we're in a pretty good spot.
That would be my primary concern, is just making sure we can get to all those big agenda items. Because remembering specifically the night that we did the listening session last year, we ended up having a very long meeting that may have been MCAS data. And then we had to link the executive session after that. And it was, you know, everything kind of got crunched in.
Yeah.
So in terms of just a few big things I'm thinking of, the, we would, the MAS, MASC resolutions would be on that same night as the listening session, right?
Yes, for the November 3rd meeting.
And then what about, when would MCAS?
We, I think we decided that the MCAS presentation, you have this in your superintendent's.
There's the NCAS report. So the teaching and learning committee will get, November 19th, we'll get the full MCAS presentation with the principals. And then on our December 1st meeting, assistant superintendent and Dr. Abrams will give that MCAS overview. And then the following, December 15th is the principals will be presenting to the school committee, the school improvement plans.
Right.
Which you'll see some of the data that we just talked about.
We had talked about maybe having two different meetings for the school improvement plans, like one set of schools. But I think now we might just roll them into one meeting.
Roll it to one, correct.
And it could probably be a little more streamlined, too. Okay. Those were the big things that I had in mind. So it sounds like you do have those spaced out nicely.
Yeah. Any, any concerns on your end?
No, not a concern. Can, can, members that are not a member of the subcommittee attend the teaching?
Yes, and I was, thank you for bringing that up.
Yes.
We were going to suggest that that would be a good opportunity for, for everybody who has an interest in giving input on, particularly on that information. It'll, it'll then come to the full school committee as well, but you know.
Presumably that would be a truncated version.
Yeah, yeah.
Am I correct? I think all of our subcommittees are designated of the whole, so that others can go. Is that correct?
Just, yeah, I think that's correct.
Good. Okay. Well, that, that's enough reassurance for me. Those are, those were the just main things. I wanted to make sure we weren't going to be overburdened on one night.
Yeah.
It sounds good.
Yeah, good. Thanks for clarifying that. Any other concerns about that? All right. Then all those in favor of moving the November 7, canceling the November 17th school committee meeting? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? And the vice chair votes aye. All right, thank you. And subcommittee updates. We do not have Mr. Callahan here, but we are, I don't know, Mr. Berger, if you want to just give an update about our next meeting or?
This Thursday.
Yes, we're having a meeting this Thursday.
Yes, he sent out the agenda today and collected feedback. And it looks like a good agenda. Mr. Manning will be there.
Great. Thank you. Policy subcommittee, Ms. Shaw, I think, anything to add? Anything, any updates? I think we gave an update the last meeting.
Yeah, the meeting in January, and then we'll get things ready for the first readings of those tech policies.
Yeah, so we have, we were going to maybe have the tech policies on tonight. We want to do one more round of review, but we do have some policies that we have pending. There's no super urgency on them, but we will probably bring those forward at one of the upcoming meetings. Great, thank you. And communications subcommittee, Ms. Hall. You guys are starting to wrap up.
Yes, so we're, we're not planning on meeting this month because, you know, we're anticipating the listening session and then having a follow-up meeting probably a week or two after that in November.
Okay, great. And then maybe having some kind of wrap-up kind of recommendation on the future of either that committee or?
Definitely, I'll reach out to you about getting that on an agenda.
Okay. We'll take too much time. Yeah, great. Appreciate that. And then teaching and learning, I think we, we heard that you guys, you were able to, anything else you wanted to add on, on that one?
No, I think it was really helpful. I think that's a really great use of that subcommittee. Because there were, you know, there were some other pieces to what was presented to us that I think maybe was like a little bit too in the weeds for, for what we needed at this stage. And so, yeah, it's, it's, it's just a good use of our time as a committee to look at things in the smaller group. And then it, you know, as I said, I really, it really reflected the effort that they took our feedback and, and made it a better presentation for tonight.
Great. Good. Yeah. Fantastic. All right, with the superintendent's report.
All right. I, we just discussed the upcoming dates for the MCAS. So the 19th will be the teaching and learning. December 1st, assistant superintendent for along, Dr. Abrams will give the overview to all of that work and what's happening. And then on the 15th, we'll come back and do the school improvement plans. So I appreciate vice chair Walker working with us on that to move some things around. But I think this spaces it out, so it's not one of those four-hour meetings. So I think that'll be good for everyone involved. I had my ad hoc superintendent advisory council, this is the group similar to the teaching and learning group, gives us input. Not only do we have parents and staff and community members on that, it's just, it's really helpful. What really came out of that, we did our D cap, I mean, district improvement plan, and then we ended up talking about how do you communicate to the larger public outside of the school? And so I'll be working with Mary Ann Bessie, and she has a group at the senior center that she would like to have me come out and talk about the schools and all the things that are happening to, so they have a better understanding of what's happening in our school system. So that was great. And then also what's coming out of that, too, is the, looking for us, I think in the beginning of the year to start an ad hoc committee with artificial, regarding artificial intelligence, which will coincide with the MIT professional development in January. And as we formulate that committee, we'd like to have a couple of school committee members also be part of that. As we start looking at, you know, AI in schools, the impact and things like that. So kind of want to get ahead of that a little bit. And working with the vice chair, we feel that will be a, a good use of people's time to start planning ahead. So we have some members on that. My advisory council, they're also in the tech industry, so they're well-versed in what's happening in the workforce. So I think we'll formulate a pretty good committee there to assist us as we move forward. Innovation career pathway, so we received a couple of things is we know the Cindy Johnson NEF media lab, but we also working to tie in that pathway to the media productions and broadcasting. So that's going to be a great use of that space. And then also our daycare center that we have established that, as we know, will be an early childhood pathway. But we also applied for an additional grant. So we received $50,000 to help enhance our industry partners in developing the pathways. But also this money, or this funding can go to the grade eight exploratory workshop. So the idea of that is working with our eighth grade students with opportunities in the career pathways that we'll be offering, you know, before looking in, you know, the, the spring, before they head up to the high school. So this funding will assist us with that in developing also a pathway committee. And then purchasing additional equipment that will assist us with developing the pathways that we already have. The other piece, working with Mr. Wolf, Dr. Hobbs, Ethan Manning, is really taking out how to look at this capital skills grant opportunity. It's additional funding, very similar. It focuses on additional equipment and then renovation of certain spaces as you develop, you know, these pathways that, that we already have existing and then the future ones. The grant has not been released, but you know, we're planning ahead and ready, getting ready to apply for that. That will be super helpful for us. You know, part of our idea is the sailboard, our engineering, although, you know, we have space there, but we can start outfitting that with some updated equipment and things like that. So some plans in place for that. So that's the, the good news. I'm going to skip over this one. I'll come back to this. We'll end on the Department of Ed cuts.
Oh, great. Can't wait.
Let's, let's continue the good news move here. But I'm not sure if you know, but one of our teachers, A.J. Smith, it's the second publication of a children's book, Catnip Mouse. So A.J.'s also extraordinary art teacher, graphic designer up at the high school, but also is a published author. And I just really want to give, you know, him credit. This is a great, you know, accomplishment for him. But he's also bringing all of these skills and all of his knowledge and expertise to our kids every single day. So I think it's pretty cool to have a staff member who's also a published author and artist. And then he's also going to be at Jabberwocky Bookshop.
He was at Jabberwocky, yeah.
Oh, he was?
Yes, for days.
And they did a bike bus from, to the event.
Is that yesterday?
Because A.J. is also part of the bike bus organizers.
That is so cool.
So they did a bike bus from the, I don't know how, they probably met there and then did a bike bus to the Jabberwocky, yeah.
All right. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's good. End on that part zone. Maybe we can bring him in and maybe just recognize him in the school committee.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, that's, that's cool.
Get his autograph, he's famous now.
Yeah, that's very cool.
That's great. And yeah, and just so, I just wanted, this was through the governor's messaging, and I think it was in the packet also, but just to kind of highlight the impacts of the federal government shutdown and the potential impacts, you know, on our school district, but really the school districts across the state. So as we all know, the layoffs that happen at the federal government, you know, it's a massive loss of capacity, the people that oversee these important, these important aspects of education, over 500 staff have been laid off. There is concerns with special education funding down the road. You know, eliminating the capacity for the federal government to deliver these services and the funding and spread across the country is a concern. And I just think the financial threat, as the governor outlined, $2 billion cut to Massachusetts is something that, if that does occur, you know, it's something that she knows that the state would not be able to fund those types of programs. Title I, in our low-income students is a risk of funding delays and all of that. Other areas impacted, the Office of Civil Rights at the federal government, but that also impacts the local, our Office of Civil Rights of Massachusetts because they're funded by the federal government. So I just think there's, there's some realities that are starting to happen now, or some concerns, you know, with this federal government shutdown. And then also what makes things even more complex is the layoffs that are actually happening to some of these federal employees in these, in these programs. So I think it's just something that we obviously need to be aware of, keep on, you know, forefront. And it's something as we start to develop our budget, you know, working with Mr. Manning. I mean, these are our most vulnerable students, most vulnerable families. That funding goes directly to them. So it'd be something that we just want to make sure we keep on our radar. And then monitor the, the situation that's coming out of Washington, so. And then I just listed in part of her letters, all of those programs that you see in the different offices are all listed that have been impacted at this time. So that's, well, I guess we'll end on that. Maybe we should have ended on A.J.
Yeah, we might want to end on A.J.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, superintendent. And I, I do want to say that I think, you know, we're trying, I think as a school committee, you know, we have a lot of control over what happens in our schools. And obviously, the state has been doing quite a bit to try to get some of the funding either temporarily or permanently replaced with state funding sources. But I think it's a good reminder that, you know, no matter how much local control and influence we have over, over our local schools, we also do have a fair of reliance on federal resources. And it's not just the funding resources, but it's also the, the knowledge and resource sharing that happens with a, a federal entity that has, you know, the, the, you know, ability to advise and instruct related to some of these federal requirements. And, you know, those individuals that work in these federal agencies also have an immense amount of knowledge that they are able to share. And there's a lot of streamlining of processes that happens as a result. And the, the more we lose those people, the, the more we're going to see it affect our, our local schools in a lot of different ways. But yes, in particular, it's the, the particularly vulnerable populations that are being impacted. And it's not just low income, it's also folks of all different learning abilities, it's also folks with a variety of language challenges or not, you know? And so it's just, it's just, you keep going on. But disabilities and all that. Yeah, but thank you. That's an important reminder. I think we do need to, as a school committee, need to remember, keep that in the forefront as we go forward into the budget process particularly. Okay. Any follow-up questions for the superintendent?
Well, mine would just be, what, what do you foresee? And it doesn't have to be specific now, because this is new. How would you see this affecting us at the district level first? You know, the funding is obviously a question mark, I understand, from the state level. But do you know what I mean? I mean, some of these departments will not affect us directly. As unjudicious as it is to get rid of them, they might be higher education. General, I'm driving up, like, where might we see this effect?
I mean, for us, we overall total of the funding that comes into Newburyport through these various programs is close to $1 million. Especially the, the big ones, the IDEA, which is around $620,000 every year. So that's the big one that really supports students with, you know, learning disabilities. So I, I think that that's, you know, that's really important. The other, the other piece is like some of these other offices, the Office of Civil Rights right now. So if there's, you know, discrimination, you know, things like that, that rise to the level where you're sending a report to the Office of Civil Rights right now, there's no one receiving those reports. So I think that when you're looking at the financial impact, that's one thing, but these programs, you know, support a lot of our students' families and just, you know, student, you know, we talk about sense of belonging, you know, equality, things like that. And when you don't have a department that you can work with, it's, you know, it's, it's definitely concerning. So I just think overall, when you, if, if this continues and this is, you know, cuts that we're actually going to see happen, that's, that would have a direct impact on. So sometimes we think of the federal government in the sense of, well, you know, that's just Washington federal government, but they have, you know, the federal government also, you know, the Civil Rights of Massachusetts office is also closed once that, you know what I mean? So it does trickle down into the states for these different aspects. So I just think it's something that, you know, hopefully, you know, the, our legislators and state and federal officials can get in a room and hopefully resolve some of these things. But it is definitely something that, you know, all the superintents and districts are really taking a hard look at because it could have, you know, big impacts down the, you know, down the road.
And the IDEA is funded through the academic year?
Yeah, right now. Right now, we have it funded, but if there's cuts and lay, I mean, so we, we did not anticipate. I mean, we haven't, we haven't received anything yet, but when the governor is sending out a memo like this to all of us, she's also making people aware, like some of the funding that we're depending on to fund our programs for this year may not be there.
Right.
So it, it's something that I think we're all just, you know, taking a look at and, you know, trying to plan for the worst if that kind of happens, so.
Yeah, I think that's a great question to clarify, like sort of where are we going to see the hits first? But I do think that the governor is trying to forecast a little here, that, you know, these stopgaps that are in place right now maybe are, we're going to, that's not, that's not going to last. At some point, we're going to have to see some cuts to some of these programs that maybe we've been able to kind of get, get by with. But, but I do think that the, the point about the staff, the staffing part of this, like the, the civil rights offices that support the very families that maybe, you know, have challenges and need help getting through the system and understanding their rights, you know, those supports go away and it, we all suffer because it, it puts people on an unequal playing field when you're, you're wanting to navigate those, those important issues.
It's really the, the checks and balances, I think, for, for all of us, you know, how we should be operating, guaranteeing people's, you know, civil liberties, civil rights. And so when there's no checks and balances and no one kind of watching what's happening, that can create problems for, for a lot of us, so.
Okay. Any other follow-up questions for the superintendent? Okay. A lot of good info in your report. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And any new business? All right. So anybody want to move to adjourn?
So moved.
That was pretty, that was pretty close.
Second.
Oh, good. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we just need to make sure that, so we're adjourned?
We haven't signed.
We've just signed.
Right, yeah.
All right, thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Didn't seem appropriate paths, because you're a busy chair.